We're gonna start with the design review commission, followed by the planning commission meeting tonight. So first things first, I'm gonna open it up and we'll have a prayer and then we'll dive in. That's correct. But I would just thank you for just another beautiful day. And God, can you just ask your hand guidance and your wisdom over this body? And guide us tonight, guide this community, and everything that we do. We love you and thank you. Pressing for a second. All right, so roll call please.
Mayor Lamb?
Here.
Commissioner White?
Here.
Member Freeson?
Yes.
Member Gray? Chairman Gibbons?
Here.
All right, we have zero time again for meeting minutes. Thank the staff for posting that on the website. That was actually pretty convenient, easy to get to. Appreciate you watching. Comments, edits, changes, motion?
Motion, group.
Motion. And a second. Roll call please.
Mayor Lamb?
Yay.
Commissioner White?
Yay.
Member Freeson?
Yes.
Chairman Gibbons?
Yes.
All right, no old business, so moving on to new business. Staff, we've got case three. May open to sell there.
Okay, so this is our third design case for the year. This is the Mayfield property, phase one. As you see highlighted on this map, there are two existing buildings on this property. The proposed building will be just north of that existing building. There will be a small alleyway connecting to the back. If you want to go ahead and switch to the street view. This is the section next to the cars that you see there that will be developed. Excuse me. We actually have the applicant here, Ray Stevens with Pro Builders Unlimited. And I believe we might have the owner of the property here that will be used for retail. If you go ahead and swipe to the next. This is the site plan. The hatched building is proposed building. You will see in the next slide that the building is going to be a brick building matching the existing buildings. It will be red brick, wide window and door frames, and a black awning that is not depicted in this rendering for clarity. In the top, in the north elevation, you see the ends to the right, which will be from the parking area, which will be located in the back of the project. This is also the side that you'll see if you drive from the highway down, going south. We're currently working with the landscape professional for this project to meet the landscape design requirements in an alternative way as a zero setback requirement or a zero setback is present for MUTC. A traditional street yard will not be feasible or attractive. It negates the purpose of MUTC zone projects. So we're working on installing planters to make this a really attractive building. I submitted photos to you guys to see what the existing buildings are looking like. This is pretty much exactly what that new building is going to look like. It's going to have that Udoa Old Town feel that is already existent in this location. The architecture of the building meets all of the design standards of our city. The heavy material requirement is met. Same with the color requirements. And staff therefore recommends approval of this design.
Great. So just a note to all visitors tonight, if you wish to speak, please approach the microphone. State your name very clearly and your phone number as well. And limit your time to the microphone to a couple of minutes. So if the applicant would like to step forward they can, or any questions from members here? We'll come up here with you.
Hello, my name is Ray Stevens with Pro Builders with a general contract in firm chosen for the project, owner of the project. And we appreciate you guys considering our request. Pretty straightforward. We're trying to blend in with what's there and enhance it and not take away from it. So that's the gist of our design intent. And we appreciate your consideration. If you have any questions, we're here to answer.
Does this take away the little cottage used store?
Yes, ma'am, unfortunately it does. And the plan is to remove that structure and build this other structure basically in its place.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Moving to a break. Of the motion. And a second. Roll call please.
Mayor Lamb?
Our staff.
Thank you, Ray.
Moving on to case number four, Surf Pro Industrial.
Okay, so this is case four of this year for design review. This is the expansion of the Surf Pro location on Jet Rail Drive, come off of Watkins. This particular review focused on the office space in the front only. The warehouse is permissible as is under the use of that zone, which is industrial. I want to make a quick note that this aerial overview is not current. The property, that slim property that you see to the north of the highlighted property is also industrially zoned. Hamilton County GIS had not updated that. We will make note of that. The warehouse, or actually the street view that you see in the next slide, is off of Watkins Drive, off the railroad. The office space will be visible from that location, which is why it's subject to the design review process. As with the previous case, we have the applicant here, I believe Stephen Collins with NPL Construction and Architecture is here. I'm not sure if Mr. Guthbertson is here, who's the owner of the property, to answer any questions. This is the proposed site plan that staff has been working on with the applicants. This is actually the landscape plan that I have reviewed and found to be suitable. As you know, on the bottom of the site plan, there is a buffer. This is due to the rezoning conditions attached to this property when it was rezoned last year. Also, there is a residentially zoned property that, you know, have to be protected from any disturbance of an industrial use, which is why there is a pretty wide buffer. The applicant has actually extended that buffer to also protect the rear of that residential property to not inflict any effects on the residents living there. If we go to the next slide, you'll see the proposed exterior drawing. Again, let's focus on the office space. It meets all the heavy material requirements. Everything depicted in this brown red you will see is brick. There is a stone base. We find that two elevations exceed the EFAS requirement by a very minuscule amount. We don't see this to be a problem. It's less than 1%. And would recommend that the heavy materials requirement or materials requirement in general is met despite that. In the next slide, you will see more drawings of that building. It meets the natural color requirement in our ordinance. Same with wall articulations. I think the next slide shows it from the side again. Go ahead and slide to the next. This is just the staff recommendation. Anyway, we have worked with the applicant. We believe this is a approvable project. It's a good example for having an office space in front of an industrial warehouse. The office space itself is about 5,600 square feet. The warehouse is going to be about 20,000 square feet. But with the appropriate landscaping, this is going to be a good-looking industrial office mixed use in that location when our residents drive by. Therefore, staff recommends the approval of this design.
Excellent. Thank you. Comments, questions? Kelly, what did we, before Kristen came on board, what did we discuss previously? Was it about the driveway cut to the office space? Go ahead, does the property?
Yes, one of their conditions was that heavy trucks wouldn't be accessing from two locations. And the way that this is laid out, the trucks and soldiers would be accessing off of Jet Rail as is, and then just office personnel or those going for office work would be coming off of Watkins.
Got it.
And we did see this case twice because of the original condition that they had to get access, vehicle access to Watkins Street. They didn't want that office furnished on Watkins Street with Watkins Street address. So that did come back and that condition was lifted. But that did, the other condition that Kirsten mentioned remains, without the landscaping.
I think it was like a great addition in the office space there. So if the applicant or owner would like to speak, feel free to approach the mic with your name and your phone number.
Hello, my name is Stephen Collins. Number is 423-988778. I'm at NPL Construction, I'm an architect. Jeff Guthbertson is not here today, but I'm here to speak.
Any questions? Would you like to speak, sir?
Yes, sir. I'm Stefan Tatum. I live right next door to where they're gonna build.
Can you state your name and your phone number, please?
Name, Stefan Tatum. Number is 423-309-9732. I live right there next door to where they're gonna build. They're already started now, you know. I talked to Jeff himself. And I told Jeff, I said, Jeff, I'd love to go ahead and deal with operating the site. And I told Jeff, Jeff should go out and she wouldn't be over there because there's been a lot of wrecks there on that train track. And there's no crossarms there. It's gonna be very dangerous. I've seen a lot of trucks get hit up there on that railroad track, not counting people getting hit. And I wish they wouldn't put a business right there, but I've always been one there since the singing plant. And I saw a singing truck get hit also. So, you know, I wish they wouldn't deal it there, because I'm really in the process of being built. So the noise level has gone up quite a bit since they built some throw in the bag, but it's gonna be even worse for my house sitting right there next to it where they're gonna build. I know they said they're gonna put up a buffer there. That's gonna keep the noise down from them backing down in the loading docks, things like that. And that's the only objection I really have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kristen, could you put up the view of the street?
Right there. So what do you see to the right side of Jet Rail? So Jet Rail Drive goes towards the right on these pictures. That landscaping that you see there will be under start between the railroad and Jet Rail Drive. There will be a street yard in front of that office building, same with the buffer on that side. And I actually believe that the truck traffic will not go by the residential property. It will go into the back of the warehouse, which is shielded with that buffer. And existing vegetation on that commercially zoned property, there's actually a flood plain. There will not be any development in that area.
Where do controls signal alarms? Is that the railroad makes that decision or is it the joint?
So to make it extra complicated, the city boundary starts at the edge of the railroad right-of-way on the south side of the train tracks. So that crossing is actually within the county.
So is the railroad control the crossing? That was the question.
Correct, correct. That's the railroad.
And there is a stop sign there? Is that what I'm seeing?
If there's no other questions.
And just to clarify that this is for the design of the building itself, the zoning was open, it approved it in place there. It was already, it was commercial zoning. So this was just for the building itself. And so just wanted to make sure that was on the record, if that's what this hearing was for tonight, for those other folks who might be here.
Thanks for the clarification, Kelly. Any other business for the design review from staff?
No.
Who's in here got a motion to retire? All right, we're gonna call to order the planning commission for July 13th. Roll call please.
Mayor Lamb?
Yay. I mean, here. I'm sorry.
Commissioner White?
Here.
I think I'm here.
Member Freeson?
Here.
Member Lehman? Member Moody?
Here.
Vice Chairman Gibbons?
Here.
Chairwoman Gray?
All right, we have some meeting minutes from June. Any comments, edits, or motion?
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call please.
Mayor Lamb?
Yay.
Commissioner White?
Yay.
Member Freeson?
Yay.
Member Moody?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Gibbons?
Yes.
All right, no old business, so moving on to new business. Rezoning request for AG1 AR.
Thank you, this is case number 202001. As you said, rezoning request from AG Agricultural to R1L Low Density Single Family with a planned unit development or otherwise known as a PUD overlay. And this particulars on this 2.5 acres in total. And I won't go through all the minutia of this, but the key issue or the key points are that the proposal contains 198 lots of that 90.5 acres, around 37. Open space and for a gross density of around 2.19 units per acre for residences. This was included in your packet as a kind of comparison between the current agricultural zone and what it allows and what the proposed R1L PUD would allow. Just as comparison, generally it will allow smaller lot sizes, smaller lot widths, and greater flexibility in configuration of lot sizes and configurations and other. Things to remember are the density would could increase up to a maximum of five units per acre. This one is below that. Maximum building height is slightly more. So these are the key differences. It can only be built on sewer. That's one of the provisions, and that's the only way you can get a lot size that small. So that is some of the key differences there. To help visualize this, the subject property is outlined roughly in blue. It is on the edge of the city of Collegedale. The black dash line is the boundary between city of Collegedale and unincorporated Hamilton County. The area down here, you see on the zoning map, this is the surrounding zoning. It's A1 in the county, which is roughly equivalent to the AG in the city of Collegedale. Adjacent to that, to the west is R2. And then on the, to the north there, Sandy Trail, this is zone R2, which would allow single family and duplexes, and it does feature duplex development. Moving to the south and east, on Orchard Drive here, there's this area of C3, which is Wind River Homes. And Orchard Drive is currently the proposed access further into Old Town, Aappuson, R2A is found here. So we won't get into everything else, but that is the surrounding zoning, to give you an idea of the context. This is a photograph of Orchard Drive looking to the west. That's the Wind River right there. And this is really Macaulay Avenue turning as it turns into Orchard. Further you get to the access point for this property, proposed access point. This is the subject property itself. This is the zoning sign that's posted by the applicant. So this is right at that black dash line that we saw on the map. This is the adjacent residential property to this area right here on Orchard Drive. So this would be immediately to the, just to the south of the access on Orchard Drive. This is the current configuration or way Orchard Drive access currently looks now. This is the home we just looked at, and this is the subject property over here. To the north is Sandy Trail. So you do have the R2 and duplex development on either side of Sandy Trail. And this is the railroad crossing here. You can see the stop sign. No lights or gates or bells, just a cross buck and a stop sign. So this is the crossing here, and that is something that the staff and the applicant have taken into consideration in reviewing this particular case. So this is the site plan itself. Looking down here. I say down here, there it is. This is Wind River. So this is Orchard and the access point here that we looked at on the photograph. And Sandy Trail is back this way. So it's oriented sort of an east-west configuration right here. So this is the area that would be proposed. If you see the green here, this is area that we proposed as a community lot, preserved area. Do have wetland, delineated areas over here. The site does not currently have sewer. It would have to be supplied with a pump station. And so that is a consideration there to get sewer to the property. The applicant is obviously aware of that and would extend sewer, and then the city would maintain that going forward. So I won't, nobody likes to be read out of a PowerPoint, but staff's recommendation is to defer for a number of reasons. We felt that the site plan itself, we need some additional information on the site plan itself, including the lot configuration, lot typicals, streets, centerline radius, typicals, or actually what, how they meet the standard. And then 25-foot buffer would be required as part of the PUD ordinance. So there's some additional information required there. More critically is to ensure the health, safety, welfare of the community, the staff can't recommend approval of this request until other provisions are finalized and secured for upgrading Orchard Drive to an acceptable standard. The fire marshal requires a 26-foot drive, 26-foot wide drive to access property. So Orchard Drive would have to be under that requirement. Orchard Drive would have to be improved to 26 feet, as you saw in the photograph earlier. It was a narrow road currently. So that is a fire marshal requirement. So staff does have concerns about access to the property and the impacts of the development. So at this point in time, we are recommending to defer, awaiting additional information from the applicant. And I know the applicant is here tonight, and I believe there's a significant number of other interested parties that are here tonight as well to be recognized.
Are they from, accessing from Sandy Trail? I'm not sure if that's true or not.
No, and I didn't clarify that. Sandy Trail, given the number of homes, if the property had more than 200 lots, 200 lots or more, there would be two required entrances, means of access. And so it is under that threshold. However, the railroad, as we just discussed on a previous case, the railroad would require, it would require railroad approval to add those additional trips a day across Sandy Trail with that crossing in its state of having no lights, no bells, no gates. So that would be a time-consuming and probably expensive process with a railroad. So that's why they are looking at Orchard Drive. Staff is recommending, or if that were the case, a secondary access that would be emergency only off of Sandy Trail, not open to the public. It would just simply be for access maintenance of any pump station and EMS or other emergency response. It would be gated and not available to the general public. So the residents would not be able to obtain access egress or ingress through that point either. So these are items that staff has discussed, and we feel like at this point, we don't have enough information to definitively recommend that or not. Just pending more information, so that's how we came to our recommendation to defer.
So if you're here and you'd like to speak again, just state your name and your phone number for the record.
And I would hear from the applicant first, and then if there's anyone else here to speak, then they would follow, and then the applicant could follow up beyond that.
Thank you, Mike Price, MAP engineer. And get these worked out to the point that hopefully the staff can recommend approval at that time. If there is protocol for me to do, I'd like to reserve any time that I have to maybe address questions that may come up after I hear opposition. But otherwise, I don't have anything else to add unless there's questions of either staff or commissioners at this time.
Mike, I've got one, just from a sewer standpoint. Wait, I'm sure we've talked about this, but from a sewer extension and a pump station standpoint, what would the city be assuming and be responsible for in the handover?
So developer would build the pump station and acquire all easements and run the force main to tie to our existing system. And then we would take it over for operation and maintenance. One of the things we were going to have to discuss with the applicant will be phasing such that the sewer system, the sewer pump station operations are at a break even after phase one and not dependent upon future phases.
And is the whole community on low service force main or is it a gravity system within the community for the single pump station?
So we've not designed at this point. We think the majority of the site should be able to be served by gravity. There may be portions that could be on force main just from a standpoint that the flatness of the grade, there's not much gradient change in through here, that we may have sections to keep us from sinking it so deep that it becomes either A, we get rock, or B, the cost becomes so problematic. We will try to figure those things out early in the process versus later. But we will try to certainly serve everything by gravity sewer that we can.
The city doesn't have a means, nor does it accept grinder pumps.
Maybe the city might consider something different in the future, but we'll say any. So Orchard currently is a 30-foot right-of-way from what we have found. And so our thought process is to look at widening towards the Wind River side. We've had some discussions with them. We would not be widening or taking, well, let me back up. We would not be taking any properties or hitting on any properties that are residential in that area. We would stick to the railroad side, if you will, as it relates to trying to do all the widening. widening there. Or if we do widen towards the residential side, not take or get onto their properties, if that makes sense. But we did feel that access, which you can see in this photograph here, widening would essentially be on the right side. We envision the power poles coming down and everything going underground. We would do landscaping up against the building so as to create a more scenic and pleasant entrance into the development. Not that that's not a pretty building, but it's just not quite what we want people to see, if you will, when we have people coming into the development. So we've looked at it. We've had surveyors that have gone out there. So we've done a preliminary indication that we can widen it and make that work to the fire marshal's requirements out to Macaulay, which is behind where the photograph is taken If not, then I'll wait here with opposition answer.
If they're talking about, I would have a section on that side of the road over there. I just wonder, would they take over the whole section there? It's on the right-hand side of the driveway that he was talking about. I live right on the other side of that. And so when you talk about widening the road, you're talking about widening on the right side and not coming over on the left side.
That's my understanding what the applicant's proposing.
That's why we wouldn't make clear that the liner driveway, the side down that park you're right there that you was talking about a while ago. They live right in the highway and I own the park right there on the left side of that road. So when you talk about widening the road, you're talking about widening it on the side over there. It's a field, you're not going to come over on the left-hand side anymore.
Okay. The applicant will address it?
Okay. Yeah, I was forced to, to drive that way straight right through there. I live, my property's right on the left side of the road, right there where my curb right there. And when you're talking about widening the road, you're talking about widening on the right-hand side, right?
It's our understanding that it would be this side here.
Right, that's what I was talking about. So you're talking about widening it on the left-hand side, right?
That's what the applicant relates to us.
Okay. Well, that's why I was wondering, because it showed that Collisdale had that whole field up there, and before they even part of it, they agreed to, the people who put the subdivision in there, agreed to, you know, part of the Collisdale, whatever, you know, but that whole field up there, the Collisdale, city do size of the whole field from there for you to keep that whole thing up there.
Right, it's right on the edge.
Yeah. They keep back to the side of the support side there. And that, you know, you talk about right widening the road, it's all the field on the right-hand side, right?
That's, yes, that's what. It would be on this side here between the existing road and the existing building. And I would assume that there's going to be some shoulder improvement on the left side.
Right now, there's not no, too far to even pass on that road. I mean, one of them had to get over, that doesn't buy, you know, I mean. That's why I was wondering, I live right around the curb right there, around that sharp curb right. I'll take care of that part of the building, but we'll certainly deal with the driveway.
Good evening. My name is Ben Udi, 423-551-1817. Thank you for the time to come and body the voice of concerns about the subdivision, questions that I have for the engineer. I'm an adjoining property owner with 45 acres that directly adjoining this. And I have a few concerns while I'm on the development per se. I do have a few concerns about how that will impact overall traffic flow in the neighborhood, obviously the level of traffic. Your road connects back into First Street, and at that point, barely 12 feet wide. And so if we widen one part, we're still going to have that issues of people coming up, East Brainerd cutting through and cutting through the neighborhood. That's going to be a significant impact, I feel, on the neighborhood. And I don't know how you guys are planning to address that. And that's more where I'm coming from, is how's that going to affect the overall neighborhood? Not just widening. I don't feel that having just widening that one part of Orchard is going to do anything because only part of the traffic's going to use that, and the rest are going to try to do the cut through on the other part of Orchard, if that makes sense. So those are my concerns, that the development itself with 198 homes and average of two cars per family, now we've got a whole lot of cars, we've got a little bitty community with a lot of people who've been there for a long time and nice quiet, and all of a sudden we're adding 200 to 300 cars a day through a small neighborhood with small residential roads and kids riding bikes in the streets and things like that. And now we've got all this, how do we address that for the safety, for the kids' plan, for the people living there, and then also for the people driving in and out to their new homes? So those are my concerns as an adjoining landowner who has property in the area, is not against the development, but really wants to understand how that's going to change, not just putting a development going, but our bikes. We all know how cut-throughs end up in neighborhoods. When you find a cut-through to get to your subdivision to another neighborhood, it's 25-mile, and all of a sudden it becomes a Speedway. We've all seen that happen around areas here and in Chattanooga. So those are my concerns. Thank you for your time.
So whoever is controlling the PowerPoint can go back to the site plan. So the first gentleman was asking about access. I'm going to approach the screen just for, I think it'll probably be easier to understand. See, there's two lots on the left end. The second lot is there by 199. You see that there's this little dark driveway showing in that lot. That's the access that's proposed. That is the access proposed to that second lot. Currently, the access comes through this property to that. We're keeping the same tie-in point, the same. It will now just be directly off of a proposed road. Second gentleman mentioned as it relates to Orchard, he's absolutely correct, is that where it turns and then runs back in a westerly direction, it's basically a paved pick-trill in its current condition. And it's barely wide enough for one car to get down through it, much less two. I don't have a solution on that because I don't have the right-of-way. So unless there are individuals that are willing to dedicate right-of-way that gets me all the way back out, and I think that gets me to Old East Brainerd Road. May you wrong.
First.
Okay, first, first, right. The only way that that can be widened is if those individuals that live through there are willing to dedicate land for that to improve. I don't disagree that it will be used by some individuals as a cut-through. People that will be coming from the East Brainerd area would most likely hit Old East Brainerd Road and try to backtrack in. Majority probably are going to realize that that can then come down through Orchard there from a curb. I'm not saying that's where all the traffic from this development would go, but the majority will go that way. But those that will want to go a different direction, to your point, will go down Orchard. But without some additional right-of-way from the neighbors, there's nothing that we really can do to improve that, I'm afraid.
I understood the original plan was to come off WP plant and that way. Was that not an option to come in and cross that way?
I'm not familiar with that. All I know is that when I looked at the overall development and looked at the property, this was the access that made the most logical sense coming through there, so that's what we look at utilizing.
Like you said, like Sandy Trail side?
Sandy Trail honestly is not a viable access. It's one where, A, you're crossing over a railroad track, and introducing any sort of improvements to Sandy Trail at the railroad crossing are problematic. That's our main access, and the train's coming through, you're blocking traffic. If you have emergency vehicles that need to make that, that can be problematic versus the other route where it isn't at-grade crossing just right down from Orchard, but you can swing around under East Brainerd Road and make your way back through. We just thought introducing traffic into Sandy Trail ultimately at the end of the day was not the best plan for the development, not the best plan from an access standpoint and safety. We thought that, and it's not, you know, there's considerable expense of what we're talking about doing to Orchard, but we just felt that that was the best entry point and would make the best presentation for the development, even though it's coming in from the county side.
Mr. Price, if you make it clear to the audience that it would not be the city of Collisdale that it would be the developer handling the county's development?
That's correct. All the improvements are being done by the developer. Hamilton County would not be participating on this, so this is on the developer's dime, so to speak, out of this. So, you know, again, we want to make it as convenient to travel for not only our individuals that will be living here, property owners, but for certainly those that live there now. That's why we are doing these upgrades and improvements. There comes a point, though, where either A, we can't do it because we can't solve all the problems that exist, or would even honestly be creative, but we will try to address those to the best of our ability on what we can.
I feel that density is too high for an access to the neighborhood. That's the question. There's no way that you get Orchard wide enough to accommodate that to the intersection there, Bill, if you're in the moment.
I did have a question of staff, just from a procedural standpoint. Are there two votes, one to rezone and then second for a PUD, or is it all one vote as it relates to that? Maybe it's a Kelly question?
It would be all, it'd be in one vote, rezone and with the PUD, that would be the, so it'd be one vote.
Okay.
So it's one action, but two combined. The county, I know, has, you know, special sections, but we had combined that into one action.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you. All right, there's no other questions? And, all right, thank you. And we do accept staff recommendation to defer for 30 days, just for the record, in case I had not stayed here.
Very good. Go ahead.
Hi, Gary Green, 423-322-4279. I actually live at 11206 First Street at the intersection of Orchard and First. I recently moved back to the area, but never have lived in this particular section of Apison. When I bought my house, I actually knew about this development because I'm also a real estate broker and developer myself. I knew that this development was coming in, and in the past four months, I've sold two more properties to people who actually live on Orchard Drive that were very well aware that this neighborhood was on the table. And I've worked with Mike Price before, and he does a phenomenal job, and with my business partner, which is also a developer, he does a great job to accommodate and is our number one pick. After speaking with most of the residents that live on Orchard Drive from the sharp curve at the tiny house factory where you would make entrance into the subdivision, from there up, I spoke to a couple of Hamilton County officials, and I recommended that they try to change that to a one-way street.